All right, we're going to call to order the March 23 special meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and the Redevelopment Agency and Financing Authority. We begin tonight as we do each week with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge which tonight will be led by one of the seven West Sacramento nominees for the Business Journal's 40 Under Forty list, Mr. Aaron Laurel. The council did meet in closed session. We have note to consider, to confer with our real property negotiator regarding the properties noted on our closed session agenda. No report of action was taken. Brings us to presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. This is an opportunity for public forum on items that are not on our agenda. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening, please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the city clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has a chance to be heard. And to that end, we asked that all the comments be limited to no more than three minutes. There's also a flip chart in front of the city clerk which indicates which agenda item we're on. It's, we only have two, which shouldn't be too confusing this evening. We know for some folks speaking in public can cause some anxiety and nervousness and so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or applause or demonstrations or fruit and vegetables being thrown, and we maintain a civil discourse in the chambers. So with that, we do have a couple requests to speak under, as, on items not on our agenda tonight, and the first is by Patrick Cornell.
Patrick Cornell, my question is, is if California had an earthquake and a tsunami that hit and some of our levees broke here in West Sacramento, would we be able to equip the displaced people of West Sacramento and accommodate them with living quarters?
So what, the way that this process works is we take whatever comments and questions there are, and at the end, we'll return to our city manager and the council for any responses or clarifications.
We can't respond to that at all.
It's not a back and forth at this point, yeah.
It's not back and forth. Okay, and the reason why I ask this is, actually, the reason why I'm dressed this way, I've been out on the street all night last night and today, trying to assist our homeless of West Sacramento, to replace them or re-assist them or assist them to relocate as they keep being pushed from one area to another area to another area. My real question is, is what can we do for the homeless of West Sacramento? How can we truly help them? And we're willing to accommodate West Sacramento any way that we can possibly do. We help over here on Sacramento's side, and we'd love to help here in the process of getting a facility of 75-room building with the house in front of it. And that will be where the most of our people out of West Sacramento, our homeless, on the levy and the boat ramp and different places like that. We're looking for a solution right now because this is an emergency for them. Flooded out of their homes, which is on the banks of the levees, and they're being roused by the police officers to move, and it's in a situation like it is, and it has been, flooding and everything like it is. I mean, what do they do? One bad situation up here, another.
Thank you. We'll get to that in just a moment. Bill Olle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Eric William Olle of West Sacramento for the record. The state budget problem, I did have one main new thought, and that is, I know this redevelopment money's been a big ticker, and I was thinking, maybe that should be split three ways, like one-third to the state, one-third to the owner, and one-third to the city or county. I'm speaking of the profits that are made once the land is rezoned. And, of course, we should, the franchise tax boards should audit all tax returns, and the offshore corporations, that law should be changed so that if you do business in this state or in the other states, you should pay taxes. And then there's, I can just think of all kinds of ways we can cut prison costs, including that 25-years-to-life thing. And I think, I think we should consider the state returning to a part-time legislature because it seems like things were done on time way back when. It just seems like this full-time is just wasting more time and causing more problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olle. Those are the two requests. We haven't heard of that. And Ms. Richardson on the homeless question, and Ms. Johansson, who's our representative on the homeless task force, wants to, welcome to weigh in as well. Ms. Richardson, do you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, our emergency operations plan does have a shelter component to it, and in the event that there is major flooding, we do have provisions for sheltering primarily at the schools and then other agencies. Right now, there is, we are having some issues with the homeless on the river's edge because it is getting flooded, and we're trying to work with some of our social service agencies on trying to address that.
Johansson.
Yeah, I think the, there is a 10-year homeless plan for Yolo County, as there is in Sacramento County, and I know through that commission, we're going through and looking at the actual services being provided, and also the housing element that's going to be coming up fairly quick. But the problem in West Sacramento is, you probably know that the Broderick Christian Center burned down, and that's really what caused a lot of the services now to be provided at the boat ramp. Well, now we've got a flood, or at least flooding at that level, so we don't, I mean, this is pretty much an emergency situation now, but it is on our agenda to do something about homeless, to help take care of those folks, but, you know, it's a process that's ongoing right now. But there is a plan that's being put in place, and there are, there is momentum to do that, both in the countywide and the citywide.
Thank you, Ms. Johansson. All right, that brings us into our regular agenda, which is item one, consideration of resolution 11-19, authorizing the executive director or his designated to take various actions to effectuate an affordable housing development at the Delta Lane property. Mr. Laurel?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Do have a brief PowerPoint presentation to give you some visual context of this project. Delta Lane is a project we've been working on since 2008. Its origins come from the Prop 1C grant obligations that we have, that, for the grant that we received in early 2008, we designated this site for the development of 175 units in that application, and are contractually obligated to the state to provide those housing units, 130 of which are to be included in an affordable project. Before I get to the specific details of the project, I want to give you a little background context of how we got here to this project, because there's a lot of steps that we took along the way that aren't specific to the Delta Lane development, but made it possible. So the Tower Bridge Gateway Modification Project, West Phase, was done in 2007, and this was the project that essentially turned the old freeway into a city street, and also created the excess right-of-way that was made possible to, or made Delta Lane a possible development site. It really used to be a freeway off-ramp and the flyover, and when that was demolished, it created the right-of-way that was necessary to assemble the property. The Iron Works Development created the western edge of the property, and some of the street frontage there, so once the bridge district is fully built out, you'll have a street bisecting the two. Tower Court across the street is a property that the Redevelopment Agency owns, it's currently being cleaned up, and that was a property we assembled back in the 90s. The Experience Motel, I know the council's very familiar with it, it was fairly recent. We bought the motel and demolished it in 2008, and also did a brownfield cleanup, and that creates the transition area from the downtown to Delta Lane, the city and Redevelopment Agency own the entire property there. In 2009, directly to the east of the site, we removed a railroad track and the grain silo that used to be there, or grain facility used to be there, was demolished, and that creates the eastern boundary of the site across the railroad tracks, and also provided the possibility to punch through Fifth Street as part of the Bridge District project and do the Tower Bridge Gateway East project. The West Capitol Avenue Streetscape project that was just recently finished really provided the connection between the downtown and all the amenities that would serve the Delta Lane project, such as the community center, the college, the library, and the grocery stores, and other amenities we have in this area. The Streetscape provided the new sidewalks to connect to Delta Lane. And of course, the Tower Bridge Gateway East Phase project, which is now under construction, provides the access to the river, to downtown, and all the amenities go along with that, and creates the eastern edge of the Delta Lane property. So this is how the project site looks now, or in 2010. There's been some changes since then, of course, because you have the Bridge District now under construction. And just to show you the context of where the Delta Lane site will be once that project is complete, this graphic shows the Bridge District street grid and its ultimate build-out with the Delta Lane site highlighted there. And the first phase of that infrastructure, this really just shows the roadways that are being constructed. You can see how Delta Lane fits into the overall scheme of the Bridge District. And in terms of the actual project being proposed, it's 175 units, as I mentioned, that we committed to back in 2008. 129 is the specific number of affordable units that we committed to. We were awarded the Prop 1C grant, and since then, entered into contracts, a dispersment agreement, and we recorded an affordable housing covenant against the site to ensure that it could not be developed for anything other than the 175 units that were committed. And in your staff report, there's a long list of other actions that the agency and city have taken since early 2008 to specifically prepare this site for housing development. Those included, in addition to the covenants that we reported, the Phase Two environmental site assessment was done, using actually state dollars from DTSE for that. And the purpose of that was to verify that there weren't any contamination issues so that we can move forward with the housing project there. And then between May and July of 2010, we assembled the remaining right-of-way. There were some, in addition to the old Highway 275 right-of-way, there were some additional smaller pieces of right-of-way that needed to be assembled to bring the site to its ultimate configuration. Last year, we spent a great deal of time working through financial assumptions and development programming for this site to get to a, you know, a real ground-level project. And so we're at that stage now, where we have an estimated financing gap, and that's the basis for the $11.7 million loan commitment that we're asking the council to authorize tonight. And we foresee the site being developed in two phases, the first being 130 units of senior housing that will be affordable, and another 45-unit project, at least 45 units, will be the second phase on a piece of the property that we're reserving for later. And also in 2011, this was the early part of this year, we entered into discussions with the West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation. The idea behind that discussion was that the HDC could, as a nonprofit, be an ownership, a portion of the ownership of the project, because it will be a tax credit project, so there's always a nonprofit component that represents about 1% of the interest. So the HDC brings a couple of benefits. Number one, it provides an opportunity to build organizational capacity for the HDC to work with us and work with the developer to build the project. And then number two, they have access to funding that we don't necessarily have, and that could be a big help there. And what you see here is just a schematic layout of how we see the project being developed in the two phases. On the right, you have the Delta Lane Senior Project. It's roughly a two-acre site. It has the street frontage that is along Tower Bridge Gateway, and then to the left would be the, roughly about an acre in total property for the mixed-use project in the second phase. There is a pump house that needs to stay on that property, but we have, through this schematic layout, come up with a way to do both. We can have the site access for the pump house, but also the two developments. And just a couple of features that we are looking into for the Delta Lane project, obviously it will be a transit-oriented project. In addition to being along the line of the streetcar, there's actually a streetcar stop planned right in front of the site. We also already have a bus turnout that you can see in this photo that has been preconstructed. There isn't actually a bus stop there yet, but in the future, when the housing is there, we plan to have one there. And then it is 65 units an acre is the density that's planned, and this just gives you an idea of what that might look like. It's very similar density, actually, to the Bridge Housing Project that we're doing further down in the Bridge District. From here, we are again, or asking the council to authorize a loan agreement between the city and the HDC for up to $11.7 million of future housing set-aside funds that would be generated both from the Bridge District and elsewhere in the project area. The next step after the loan agreement is executed would be to select a development team, and that includes an experienced developer of high-density housing that would work with the city and the HDC on actually carrying out the development. In that process, we'll do a disposition and development agreement which would convey the property to the development team and lay out the terms of the development. The actual loan agreement that we're asking the council to authorize will have conditions to dispersment that are fairly detailed, actually. They lay out almost a set of milestones that the HDC and the developer and the city will have to accomplish before the city's obligated to disperse any of the loan funds. And that's attachment two, I believe, in your staff report. The feasibility of this project really depends on the availability of the housing funds, and so we projected the future housing set-aside and the ability of the agency to issue bonds against that future housing set-aside to provide the loan for this project. And with that, I'll turn it to the council for any questions you have about the project or the resolution.
Questions from Mr. Laurel? This includes the mixed-use, mixed-use partials as well?
The specific loan agreement only includes the affordable site. However, there is a possibility that as we go forward with the process of selecting a developer, there may be an opportunity to either do a, one developer for both projects or a larger project than 130 units that would satisfy the Prop 1C obligation. So we've sort of left that open, but the actual loan commitment is only for the affordable use.
The agency owns the property?
Correct. The agency owns the property.
Are there any covenants against the property that have been placed by the agency?
Yes, the, and the number one would be the covenant that we recorded on behalf of the state to recognize the obligation to build 175 units. And it's a land use and affordability covenant, so essentially, anyone who's looking at that property would recognize it as an obligation to build 175 units, including the affordable units. Other covenants, I'm trying to remember. I know we recorded...
No new, no covenants in the, say, the last two weeks?
No. No, actually, we did. We recorded, we recorded a covenant recognizing that there was a small brownfield issue at the site. During the Phase Two, we did discover a small area that was impacted by the former operation of Caltrans property. It is type of contamination, though, that would be incidental to grading the site, but we did report a covenant acknowledging that, that issue. And I do believe there were others, and I'm sorry, I just can't recall off the top of my head what those were.
So the mixed-use site, the mixed-use site would, is unaffected by this directly?
The loan agreement is only for the 130-unit affordable site. Going forward, though, as we get into negotiations with the developer, and we will bring that back to you for the, for the selection of the developer and the DDA, we may propose to involve the entire property and include the mixed-use site. But right now, we're just focusing on the loan commitment for the 130 units for affordable housing.
And if the agency didn't exist in two months, what would, what would the implications be for these various avenues?
I would say, number one, the implications are, because we have the covenant recorded, we would point to that and point it out as an existing obligation that we have in the state of California, and attempt to make the project, carry it forward as a obligated project, and in doing so, have the ability to collect the tax increment for the loan agreement, to honor the loan commitment that we were proposing, and also to be able to sell the property or deed the property to the developer to do the mixed-use portion, because we are obligated to that as well to the state.
That, oh, that mixed-use portion isn't part of our state obligation?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. All right. Questions? Question? Do I have any requests to speak on this item? It's not a public hearing? Is it my fancy way of saying, is there a motion? Mr. Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How soon do you expect to go out and see in the staff report, Aaron? How soon are you looking to shop the property?
Well, actually, we have been formally marketing the property to affordable housing developers for really three years since we got the grant. We actually got a lot of calls about it, as you can imagine. But formally, what we plan to do is, once we have the direction of the council on this item, we will start working immediately with the HDC to finish the loan agreement. From there, we will start, we actually started the RFQ, and it's substantially done, but the direction we take tonight could impact a little bit of what we do. But I would say over the next six months, we look to get that RFQ completely done, have it on the street, to actually bring back a proposed developer within the calendar year, definitely. We do have the obligation in the state, the HCD Prop 1C grant, to pull building permits on this project by June of 2013, so we do need to move quite aggressively to get there.
So with that timeframe, though, I mean, do you feel like, given what you've done so far, are we in a good position to select a prospective builder for the project, or are we trying to pull, are we more pulling teeth with these kinds of projects right now? It seems to me that affordable housing is probably one of the only housing.
Right.
And this is, what, a three to four-story?
Yeah, it's a, it's a high-density project. There's a good number of developers in California and actually in our, in our region that specialize in this kind of development, and we have received a great deal of interest across the state for this property. So I don't, I don't foresee it being a problem getting a developer interested. The main issue is, of course, going to be the availability of our gap financing to support the project.
Good, thank you. And is the, I mean, this is obviously a really critical location, and both, both in the long term but also in the near term, if this project goes to construction in that timeframe, it will be one of the early gateway developments for the Bridge District as well as showcasing the linkage between the downtown and the Bridge District and Tower Bridge Gateway and everything else. So is the loan amount here sufficient to deliver a very high-quality project that, you know, that does not say affordable housing on it when you drive by or walk by?
Right, right. It's tough to project, but what I can say is, the way we sized the loan was based on a pro forma that was similar in cost to the Bridge Housing.
To the Bridge, so this is scaled to be more like Bridge Housing and less like an existing project?
Right, it's definitely, it's definitely meant to be a high-density project, which in and of itself suggests different design qualities. But I would say, for comparison's sake, the recently completed Parkside-Sikmore development and the one that we're working on with Bridge, this is somewhere in between that in terms of the subsidy per unit, but it's also a much larger project, so it doesn't take into account some of the economy scale involved there. But we've attempted to size the loan to, you know, account for the fact that we want it to be a well-designed project.
Viegas?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we adopt resolution 11-19, authorizing executive director or his adjutant to take various actions to effectuate an affordable housing development at the Delta Lane property, including the completion and execution of a loan agreement with the West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation, subject to the conditions of loan dispersment provided as attachment two, and finding the environmental impacts of the proposed project were fully analyzed in the Triangle Specific Plan Supplemental Environmental Impact Report certified by the council on October 7, 2009.
All right, so I moved and seconded, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, or none. If that motion carries, thank you, and good luck. To this public hearing and approval of joint resolution 11-18, authorizing the execution of an option agreement with Stone Lock District Holdings LLC for the purchase of the Stone Lock District property. Who's got the, is this Mr. Bermudas?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. For you tonight is authorizing an approval of an execution of an option agreement with Stone Lock District Holdings to purchase the Stone Lock District property, which you see in the exhibit before you. I think before I begin, I'd like to point out there has been some revisions to the option agreement. This project, or the option and a summary report per state law was noticed for two consecutive weeks, and there are updates to the option agreement that can be found on the agenda table to my right. And so the most current form of the option is available there, seeing that there are individuals in attendance tonight in the community. What you see before you is an option agreement for what the agency considers its crown jewel of property. Through a series of acquisitions, the agency assumed ownership of this property several years ago, and in 2006, recognizing the development potential of this site, sought out to find a developer that was suitable with, to develop the property in a quality-type mixed-use concept. So in 2006, they solicited proposals, and in 2007, the Cordish Company was awarded the preferred developer of this site. And in 2007, after the selection of Cordish, staff approved with council recommendation exclusive negotiating agreement to work out what would be a disposition development agreement with Cordish for the future development of the site. So over the several years that have passed since his approval, staff has been working with Cordish to come to terms on an agreement. Through the course of those negotiations, what has occurred is that instead of a disposition development agreement, DDA, staff has now moved forward with an option agreement with Cordish. So before he denied his approval of an option agreement with Stone Lock Holdings LLC, and just real quickly, some key terms of this agreement is the purchase price, and at this time, that will be determined by an appraisal at fair market value in the next 180 days. In addition, the property does entail the full 215 acres, as you see in the exhibit. The term of this particular option agreement would be seven years, subject to extensions described in the option agreement. In addition, the exercise of the option includes an agreement that states that the property will be divided into five parcels likely to be so divided on the physical or geographic nature of the site. And then lastly, would be option payments. Currently, there'd be initial $500 option payment, and there will be subsequent additional option payments of the amount of $75,000 paid to the agency. With this, this concludes staff's presentation. Port Tellez, representing the Cordish Company, is in attendance, and my understanding would like to address the council, or as well, staff can answer questions at this time.
Our foregiving, Mr. Tellez, are there questions for staff at this time? Mr. Tellez?
Want to thank you for the opportunity. It's certainly been a long road that we've been on together. We've worked very hard on this, this project, and I know the staff has, and I want to thank everybody for that. You know, made some great friendships over the history we've been working together. You know, made some great friendships over the history we've been working together. Lot of good times, and I'd like to, hopefully, they'll continue. You know, I think one thing that, you know, when I think about this project and what we've been through, and the word that comes to mind is resolve. And I think that's a great compliment to this city. You know, it doesn't give up easily. It's no longer the little engine that could, it's the big engine that does now, or becoming the big engine that does. And so many wonderful things have happened here in the last 10, 15, 20 years. It's terrific to have seen. You know, we are entirely committed to building a world-class project in West Sacramento. We've never started a project and we didn't finish. Every project that we've done, that we've completed, we've, you know, just to kind of reiterate some of the reasons that you all, when you chose us, you know, we've been fortunate enough to have won an additional ULI award, so now we have a total of seven ULI awards of excellence, which is, you know, sort of like winning an Academy Award, and it's more than any other development company in the world. So with that, I just, I want to say thank you, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, and...
There aren't any questions, which is not unusual, so I don't want anybody to, you know, property, matters of property, acquisition and disposition are a matter for close session, and we had one prior to this meeting, so it isn't that there's not interest by the council, but we generally do not, in the interest of the taxpayers, engage in the council-level public session negotiations for the same reason anyone else in their right might would not do. So that's, the council's been fully briefed, which is why there's not questions at this stage.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Port. All right, we do have a couple of requests from the public to speak on this item as well. The first is by Bill Natty, from the River City Ruining Club. Gary Gray will be next.
Council members, I'm here representing the Ruining Club tonight in support of the project. They're very pleased with the consideration and involvement of the River City, from Cordish and the city. And was taken by the state to the post. There's our only chance that we really won this. Our junior side vote has really won. First full-time staff person, fully constrained in space for the very much deserved of this task.
Thank you. Gary Gray will be followed by Mr. Lowell. There's folks watching us on TV, and they, and both of them would hear better if, there's a button to your right, Charlie's going to help to bring the podium so that it's directly in front of you. Thanks.
Yeah, I want to know what's going to happen to the lock. I already have some federal court right now.
So as I indicated earlier, the way we handle questions that come from the podium is that we get all the public testimony and questions and comments, and then at the end of that period, we turn back to our staff and the council for responses.
Okay, I'll wait for your response.
Okay, thanks. All right, and then Bill Lowell.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, West Sacramento. This is, I know this is a big-money project, and we're talking about redevelopment versus the governor's plan versus local plans and so forth, so I still think we should, we can't, if we can't divvy up the profits and help solve the state budget, then we should resort to those suggestions that I made earlier. But I find it strange that so many of the, pardon me, so many of these businesses have LLC after their names, which I'm sure means limited liability corporation, and yet there's, yet so many corporations still going bankrupt, and the owners retaining maybe a half a billion dollars for themselves, and who picks up the tab? The taxpayers. And so I'm a little skeptical of the arrangement here, but I just thought I'd mention that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. We generally have a policy, we don't take the cards after the public testimony has begun, but I understand the city clerk may have had a misunderstanding about that. It does apply to public hearings as well, but we've got two cards, and we'll take them this time, but I don't want to create the impression that we're creating any exceptions, just in case there was any misunderstanding, miscommunication in the communication with the city clerk. So Andy Wallace will be followed by Lon Dieteren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Andy Wallace, owner of Wallace Cool &amp; Associates, a local geotechnical engineering and environmental consulting firm that has called the great city of West Sacramento our home for 27 years now. Tonight, I am here to speak on behalf of one of our clients, Port Tellez and the Cordish Company, in support of the Stone Lock District project. The Cordish Company's origins date back to 1910 and encompass four generations of privately-held family ownership. During the past 10 decades, the company has grown into a global conglomerate of successful companies and one of the leading real estate development companies in the world. Over the generations, the company has remained true to the family's core values of quality, entrepreneurial spirit, long-term personal relationships, and integrity. As a testimony to the long-term vision of its family leadership, the company still owns and manages virtually every business it has created. The Cordish Company is one of the largest and most respected developers in the world with extensive expertise in almost every discipline of real estate, including entertainment and mixed-use, lodging, sports, anchor developments, retail, office, and residential. Widely recognized as the leading international developer of large-scale urban revitalization projects and entertainment districts, the company has been awarded More Urban Land Institute Awards for Excellence than any other developer in the world. Many of the company's developments involve public-private partnerships and are of unique significance to the cities in which they are located. The Stone Lock project will be one of those projects. The Cordish Company enters its 11th decade well-capitalized and highly energized to continue its growth. Wallace Cool &amp; Associates, as well as many other local companies and employees of those companies who live, work, and play in West Sacramento, look forward to working with the Cordish Company on the Stone Lock District project, and, once again, improving this great city that we all care so much about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. And Lon, is it Peterman? Or am I mixing it up both times?
Lon Dieteren with Miomoto International. I'm a principal with the firm. Many of you, I'm sure, have heard of Miomoto International, all the work we do around the world, but our headquarters is here in Sacramento, in West Sacramento. And we have anywhere from 25 to 45 people, depending on the economy, here in West Sacramento, and many of them, as Andy suggested, live, work, and play here in the West Sacramento. So I'm here basically just to express our support for the project, a number of reasons. You know, I personally worked with Mr. Tellez on development projects, including ones here in West Sacramento. And, you know, he's a man of integrity, and I'm sure he takes that wherever he goes, including Cordish Companies. And of course, his reputation is, it's really, they have a reputation of being a quality developer. This has been said already by some of the other speakers, but I just would like to impress upon you our feeling about, their portfolio is very impressive, which basically speaks to the matter that they can do it, you know, they can make things happen. They manage their business with integrity, including working with all of the design professionals and development partners. And their commitment to local businesses such as ours in executing these developments, that's important, not only for us, but also for the city, you know, investing in the city's resources to execute these developments in the city. And third, I just think that the potential for this development is phenomenal, and we are looking forward to being a part of it, and that's why we're here to express our support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, those are all the requests. I didn't notice, but I opened the public hearing earlier, and I'm going to close it now, and turn it to Mr. Bermudas Robinson for responses to the public comments.
Yes, the comment regarding the lock, what will happen to lock facility, the lock will remain under ownership of the agency. It'll be carved out of the planned parcelization of the project to move forward, and maintenance and all responsibilities would still remain with redevelopment agency.
All right. Are there further questions for staff at this time?
I do.
Kristoff, may I present Kristoff?
Jim, if I read the proposal, the latest proposal, if I read it correctly, Cordish wants to have the option, if they start to develop a piece, to possibly farm that out to somebody else?
Yes, there's language in the agreement that basically assigns ownership to an affiliate and also non-affiliates.
That seems to be not something they normally do, because they usually start a project, they finish a project. I mean, Cordish is, it's a world-class company. It's a very, very good company, from what I remember going through the process of choosing them. But this seems like that's a little bit out of character.
Well, initially, when Cordish was selected and the E&amp;A executed, it was with the Cordish Company, and obviously, through the discussions and negotiations, terms come up, and this is a term that came up, you know, in the negotiations on the option agreement, that I think initially, we didn't get really down into the details to kind of explore who ownership would be, I guess, in staff's perspective, it was always assumed it'd be the Cordish Company, and there would be no discussion of affiliates and assignment to other parties.
Okay, thank you. So just a frame, I mean, we have, because there, you know, I think there was a Business Journal article about this today, and I've certainly gotten more than a small number of communications about this item tonight. I mean, this project has been going on for a long time, the city and the redevelopment agency and the Port District altogether, for many, spent many years, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, and some cash, to make this property. A little bit of this used to be owned by the, a lot of it used to be owned by the Army Corps of Engineers as a place to dump their dredge spoils. Some of it was part of the rights-of-way for the operation of the locks, which will not be, just in case anybody's listening, the locks are not going to, they're not going to be re-operated, no matter who owns the property, the locks have been fully decommissioned. So a little bit of it was that. We had some, I mean, there's a little bit of this everywhere. And so we did a lot of work and a lot of lobbying in Congress and directly with the White House around assembling this piece of property. Because it is already a significant community asset, although unauthorized for all-terrain vehicles and bikes and other things, but it has tremendous potential to be a community asset, it also has tremendous potential to be a community problem if it's developed improperly. And it sits at a location with a lot of waterfront property, right on the north edge of Southport and on the south edge of Old West Sacramento, that's really a critical, one of the most critical locations for the community and for its potential, for good or for bad. And so it was a very high priority for us to assemble the parcels together, which we were finally able to do. We then said, look, this is such a big deal, 215 acres of waterfront, water-oriented property, that we want to make sure we have a really high-quality development that matches what our aspirations are in the community for what this could be. And so we went out and did a very public competition for developers locally and nationally. It was one of the first times that West Sacramento said, yeah, we're of a national character now, so we're going to invite everybody across the country to compete, to develop this property in tune with what we're envisioning as part of the Southport Fragment Plan and our general plan and the Southport envisioning process that we've gone through over the last couple of years, through all that community outreach and workshops and mapping and the planning commission and our own work. Through that process, Cordish was the clear selection from that. The experience and the background, the record, and the commitment and the passion and the vision for this property that Cordish had demonstrated was exactly in line with what Cordish said tonight, in terms of what the potential was and what could be accomplished. And I think most, if not all, members of the council have been to several Cordish projects to sort of see on the ground, what does this really look like? And why are they distinctive, and how would it fit? So we selected Cordish, and that was three and a half years ago, through that process. And then since that time, we've been working with them, and they've been coming up with, you know, proposed land use maps that, you know, shows exactly the kinds of project that they would be developing, and we've been saying, okay, no, that's not quite right, or it should be a little more of that, a little less of that, no, we don't want as much tract housing, no, we want more entertainment, yes, a little more of that. And that's exactly what our job is, is a community, is to figure out what the right project is, to make sure that, this isn't a project, it's not a project about maximizing tax receipts or anything like that. This is about making the highest and best use to improve the quality of life and recreational and retail and entertainment amenities and the housing options and everything else for the residents of our community. So that's been our plan, and we've been working diligently with the Cordish Company over the last several years to make that happen, to make that project happen, with a lot of roadblocks being thrown in front of us by the flood issues and FEMA and other things, which is why it hasn't completed yet, although, you know, that's a good thing, given the way the housing market is at the moment. So that's where we have been, and it's been a deliberative, transparent, open, public process around what this property should be and what its potential is. Enter the governor's proposal on redevelopment, because we need to be very clear about why we're here tonight. The governor's proposed eliminating the redevelopment agency and demanding the more or less immediate liquidation of all of the redevelopment agency's assets, which includes, in our community, over 300 acres of property, over 36 properties, including this one. This is the largest of the redevelopment agency's properties, and would be required to be liquidated, sold, under the supervision of an agency that West Sacramento would not control, that potentially could have, you know, five out of seven members that don't even live in West Sacramento, making that decision about where, what should be, who should own this piece of property. And so it's put us in a position of having to deal with the potential threat of it being bought by someone who does not have the best interest of the community in mind, and since we won't be selling it to them in a year from now, it would be this other agency, we have no guarantees that we can control how it would unfold. And so that's why we're here, is to make sure that we avoid that potential danger of, and Mr. Natty sort of referenced that, you know, if it just disappears, somebody else buys it, they could, it's not as though they can just put anything on it, we still have zoning powers, it's also to meet our general plan, so it's not going to be a chicken-rendering plant, or an SBCA facility, either one, it won't be one of those. But that still leaves a lot of range, and when we were having the debate about what this project should be, we got a lot of feedback. When Cordish went out in the community and said, how about this map? And some people said, that's too many houses, or that's too many apartments, or that's too many boat slips. We're very opinionated as a community, but that's what we get, you know, we get to choose our own future. So we're trying to avoid this falling into the wrong hands and being used for purposes that don't advance West Sacramento's interests. So that's the reason we're here tonight. At the same time, we have an obligation to make sure that we are conducting the business of the agency and the public in a way that's, one, going to achieve a better goal than what, we know that what the governor's proposed is horrible compared to what we're doing today, the deliberative process of engaging the community in what the future should look like. But we also need to make sure we don't do harm in our responses, and so part of the choices that we've got to make, you know, tonight, are around what that right balance is. We're not interested in simply going around unloading all of the properties today, just so that we do, we don't want to do the damage that that other agency might do, and we can't, as a fiduciary... And we can't, as a fiduciary matter, just give away everybody's piece of property. But to me, at least, and I think it's true for the whole council, our interest is, our primary interest is making sure that that community asset becomes the best thing that it can be for the community. And that's our moral, our oath of office obligation to make sure that that occurs. So whatever we choose, that, I think, is the point. So sort of moving down from the 30,000-foot level to this, to the document, I think the fundamental challenge for me at least is it doesn't assure that, right? We have to, because all the document does is say, here is the property. We know what you would like to do with it and we think that's great, that's what we want to do too, but we can't control, we can't control that, except in the most broad terms, right? That, you know, that if Cordish wants to do something other than what, you know, other than in very general terms we've already discussed, then it's actually not even that they can't do it, but before they do that, they have to give us the option, or somebody the option, because we don't know if we would exist as the redevelopment agency, but they would give us or this new agency the option to buy the property back, but most likely at a higher rate, right? You know, almost certainly. I mean, the market right now, if the market was worse than it is today, then there wouldn't be any development project proposed anyway. So the only circumstance under which we would be repurchasing the property would be if there was a market to build. And if there's a market to build, then it will be worth more than it is today. So we would be selling the property to Cordish today for this price, based on today's property values. At that moment, we would either have to decide, will we pay a lot more for it back? Or are we okay with them building something other than what we have envisioned all along through this process? And that's not their intention, it's not our intention, but we can't, under any of these documents, assure that we or they are going to be the specific people making these choices, because some of these choices could be in 20 years from now, based on the way that the option extensions work with the parcelization. And so to me, I'm just not convinced that this framework achieves what we really want, which is to make sure that we're able to guarantee that what gets built there is, fits with what the community's interests are. And the broad-bush doesn't do it, right? It's important, but I think we learned from that whole conversation that we had in the community outreach in the last three years, that it's just not enough to say, you know, high-energy, mixed-use district or whatever, you know, whatever, that's not enough, that has a lot of difference, there's a lot of openings into what that can mean. And a lot of reasonable disagreements about what Cordish might think and what we might think, but under this arrangement, we wouldn't have any say, basically, over how that might play out. And I don't think that we can, I'm concerned that we can't really justify that. So to me, that's the number-one issue here, is that we don't have, there's not essentially the equivalent of, well, there's not, I mean, as an agency, we're not requiring that there be any development agreement between the property owner and the city. And that seems inconsistent with, for a project of this scale, 200-plus acres in a prime location, a defining project for the community, that the city wouldn't have a development agreement like we do with, you know, virtually every other important project that's in our city limits. The lead-off. Follow-up. Mayor President Viegas? I mean, sorry, Mayor President Kristoff, I was looking at you, talking to you.
Yeah, as far as just comments, I mean, I think you're pretty right on, Mr. Mayor. I mean, it's from some of the things that I've, notes that I've written down that I wanted to speak to tonight. I do think that this area really does need to be master-planned. We need community involvement as well as planning commission involvement, city council involvement, because this is such a unique piece of property. As I had said earlier, oh, a few months ago or maybe a year ago, this particular piece of property is our rail yard. It is that important to us, or it should be that important to us. Now, the possibility that the state will take away the redevelopment agency certainly puts this issue at the forefront. But this is such a unique piece of property, I do think that we need to take the time and see if we can work some things out with Cordish, because I do think that Cordish should continue to be the developer, but certainly not under the proposal that I've seen. I just don't think that's worthy of West Sacramento because of so many other kinds of issues. We really do need to know and have some input on what is going to be built. I have seen some of the renderings that they've done years ago and they were nice, but all they were was housing projects. They were just pounding up houses. I mean, that's what the market was dictating. And the market was headed in that direction. People were making a ton of money, as I think everybody remembers, they were making a ton of money just off pounding up houses. But this needs to be more than that. And so, I don't know. I mean, I don't know if there are other entities that we can work with, but I mean, I do think that this area should really become a destination point as far as West Sacramento's concerned. It is that well situated. And so I'm looking at, possibly trying to make some changes or see, you know, where the council wants to go on that. And just see if we can make this a better product. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Viegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'll follow with that. I would echo what I think both of you have already pretty eloquently articulated. And I guess for me, none of this, you know, it's difficult because none of this would be happening without what I think the mayor indicated earlier, and that is, you know, the proposal for the redevelopment elimination. And I think we're now moving very quickly, unfortunately, and we're trying to salvage what I think, Bill, you alluded to, is kind of a prime piece of property in our community. And that's, it's very difficult to digest all of this very quickly, knowing that we had intentions early on when we seeked out the support of Cordish to help develop the property, that we were going to get a quality product and that this was our one opportunity to develop waterfront as we know it. And it's a bit of a, I'll say a fire sale, but it's complicated in that we don't know if we're doing more harm than good by entering into what is a pretty sweet deal for the developer, not knowing what state legislation might do to undo this project, or gloss over it, or completely unravel it and make things even worse for us down the road. So I think for me, one of the things that I'd like to see, and I think, Bill, you alluded to it, is finding a way to, and I'll go back to what I think the, you know, Mr. Tellus indicated earlier, and that is, I mean, they're a world-class operation, they're committed to a world-class project, but I think our responsibility, the five of us, our responsibility is to not only make sure that we have, you know, the intentions of all parties today interested in developing a world-class product, but that we have, you know, sort of the legalese in place for future councils and other folks, the Planning Commission, members of the public, to rest assured that we're going to get a world-class product or project. And again, this is a complicated issue that has sort of landed in our lap, given what's happened in the last 90 days with the state budget, but I think it's our absolute responsibility to make sure that we are getting the best possible product and that we're putting in place the language that ensures that we get that best product. And so I don't know what the best process is to make it happen, but I certainly know that what we have here this evening doesn't give us that ultimate authority to make some of the land decisions that I think we're going to want in light of its proximity to the river. So I would support, and I know that others are going to speak on it, but I would support something a little more specific about what it is we get to say, how much we have to say and what this product looks like as we go into the future with the development.
Mr. Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll echo a few of your comments as well as the other council members. And, you know, and just in working in this in a pass through the Planning Commission and seeing how important that process is to the public as a way to, as the assurance of vetting projects as they went through on behalf of the community, I think it has solidified for me the need to make sure that, especially on a property like this, I think we all have, from the developer and the council have all talked about this, how important this project is and this property is to West Sacramento. And I don't think there's any dispute about our thought on that. But that one principle for me was around ensuring that our community had some control or at least some input and assured of the input into what's happened here. Mr. Viegas is absolutely right, as was the mayor and Mr. Kristoff, in terms of what's forced this conversation and to come so quickly has been circumstances outside of our control. And that is what the governor has proposed. And whether or not that vote will take place tomorrow or the next week or the next three months, we don't know. But what I know, at least the principle that I'm sitting on, is around the need for us to make decisions today, and this is something we, at least I tried to do prior years at the Planning Commission, was make decisions today as we would in good times. And I think we have to, as hard as it is to not know, not know outcomes and not know where things may land, I think the scene where we are so, to date, on this, on what's been negotiated and what's come up, that we're still falling short of some basic principles that we started off with. And I'd like to see that looked at again and addressed again, as everyone's intimated so far. I think it is important that we have built into any deal we make the ability of this community to have some say and some input into this process. And whatever agreement we need to do that, and the agreement we need to effectuate, make it happen, I'm supportive of. I think the only other, you know, and maybe we need to take a step back, you know, and, you know, we've run up so quickly and so fast to this point, just taking this moment to step back and see where we are will allow us to maybe look at some new approaches to this. I think the mayor brought up that the current framework doesn't work. Well, then we need to find a new framework that does. And if that means looking at other options or what does the worst-case or the subsequent actions of the governor's proposal look like, and then we will. But the most important part for me is making sure that core principle that our city has that option, has that ability to control that is still something that needs to be addressed. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Henderson?
Thanks. Yeah, the, you know, I'm kind of approaching this that we've had a lot of discussions with Cordish over the years and Cordish has been a good partner. They've shown that they've developed good projects. I've had the opportunity to view their Baltimore Harbor, which they completely renovated and rehabilitated into a really vibrant area of that part of the country. And I understand the projects that they've done elsewhere in the company. And it's, the company does have a history of outstanding projects. But part of the problem is this, the way the agreement's drafted now, that it may not be Cordish that's going to be ultimately dealing with the property. And for me, that's a huge unknown, because if it was Cordish through the entire thing, it's one thing, but we've got an issue of whether or not they're going to be there. And I kind of, well, I would reiterate what the other council has said in terms of, the city really needs to be able to control some kind of destiny on this property. And that could either be, since we really don't have the ability to control whether the assignment or not. But, you know, part of the problem that we have is, as my fellow council members have discussed, is we're kind of in a tight position now. And we don't want to be in a position of throwing away city property, because really what this, the deal looks like, and the deal itself is not that bad, it basically holds the value of this property for over 20 years at today's value. Now, the redevelopment agency can provide preferential value to projects and that's one of the reasons, one of the ways it spurs development. So, you know, we've done that before. We've actually been able to donate property to projects to help the financing package actually get something that we want. But we wouldn't do that unless it's a project that we want. So that's really kind of the critical thing. I know it seems like we're all on the same page, that it's really a prime piece of property, we have to be able to control that in some way. And I sure hope that we can bring Cordish along for that. I think he's the right partner.
Mayor President Kristoff?
Just one last comment. I think it sort of sets a tone in some respects, and that is, the one question that I ask myself, and that is, if the state was not in the mood to take away a redevelopment agency, would we cut this deal? Without a doubt, we would not even, I mean, we wouldn't look at it a second time. And so that tells me that, you know, that there's some work to do. And, you know, I think that we should maybe come back very soon after the city, the agency and Cordish have an opportunity to hear what our discussions were and, you know, maybe bring something back early next week, like Tuesday or something like that. And because I do think that there's room for improvement. And so, you know, that's something that I would at least ask the council to take a look at as we have further deliberations on this particular issue.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kristoff. Mayor President Kristoff? Mr. Viegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think, Bill, you're on to something, because I know the state is moving very quickly with their legislation, and I think if we're going to do something, I mean, there is an element of urgency. And if we, if there's agreement to be had, I would rather know that sooner than later because I think we'd do more harm by indecisiveness or not making a decision. So I would support having, and I don't know what the specific language is, whether that means entering into a development agreement, which I know is what we all intended to have. I certainly did. I certainly sort of fell in love with that opportunity as an agency to utilize that tool to ensure that we get what we want. I mean, no disrespect to Cordish, because I know they have the intentions as well, but I think it's critical, that I said, as I said before, that although we may not be ultimately here or here when elements of the deal are struck, there needs to be those assurances that the community is going to get the best product. And it's evident tonight by the testimony by, you know, folks from Allison Cool and Miyamoto and River City Rowing, that this developer is interested in doing quality work, because you don't just bring those folks along. But I also think there is an interest, an element of time sensitivity that needs to be considered as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think, to me, there's a couple of options. And I'd rank them one way now, I might rank them a different way five days from now. I mean, it's just, we are living in an extraordinary moment in the way that the legislature has a, you know, the potential meat acts at our necks and it changes everything. So, I mean, the ideal solution, I guess, in one way would be to have an agreement today, right? The ideal solution would be for the legislature to wake up and say, this is the most ridiculous thing we've ever, we can't believe that we are forcing communities like West Sacramento to have to sell a park, because that's what, you know, folks who think this is stone lock, if you don't know what that means, if you don't use Honda Hills, it's also the recreation area, the Barge Canal Recreation Access. So ideally, legislature said, oh, how could we have been so wrong? That's ideal, that's number one. But if you couldn't accomplish that, and this could happen, I guess in the legislature, it could happen tomorrow, it could happen in two weeks, it could happen never. And so there's a temporal nature to this issue, which to me suggests, it's not just about going up and spending another, you know, week or two negotiating. So I agree with the need to move quickly. I mean, to me, what we need, I mean, the fundamental way, the only way that this option, an option agreement could work is if it had a requirement that there be a development agreement with the city. That's a big change from what's in front of us if you're the developer. So I don't want to, and we don't do these kinds of things at the day. So we're not going to, we're not going to sit here and try to negotiate a document here. But if we had, if we had an option agreement that included that requirement, and there might be a couple of other nits here and there, but I mean, that's the fundamental, if we had that, you know, I'd be comfortable with moving forward with that immediately. And that would be to everybody's benefit. You know, if we pass that tonight and tomorrow Cordish said, oh, that's exactly what we were hoping for, we just never mentioned it that way, and we sign it in the morning and we were able to isolate the project from the grasp of the legislature and the governor, that's the ideal.
that's the ideal solution. Obviously, we don't know that Cordish would agree, and I think, you know, there's a good likelihood that they might not. To me, the next best option is to think about, you know, the potential, I mean, there is another governmental agency in our community that could, you know, could hold this property, maybe not 100% securely, given the way that the redevelopment legislation is being written, but that could. And so, I think, you know, that we ought to be exploring conversations with the Port District around the port being the, having the option or the ownership directly of the property. And so, I guess one way, you know, sort of the aggressive legislature, a call for aggressive tactics, but maybe one way to approach it is to, you know, grant approval of an option agreement that includes the development agreement with the city requirements, authorize its signature. If its signature comes, then great, and we move forward, but that we concurrently call, on the assumption that it might not, that we concurrently call a special meeting of the redevelopment agency board for the early part of next week, and ask Chairman McGowan if he would be willing to convene a meeting of the Port Commission and have a parallel discussion. I know that's a bit aggressive, given, but I, given that the acts could fall tomorrow, it could fall Monday, it could fall Tuesday, or it might not fall at all. And I think, you know, we also have to be prepared that we don't want to rush in, I mean, I think this is what the council is thinking as well, we don't want to rush into a bunch of decisions that may not be in the community's best interest, and then have the whole thing not happen, and we will have significant regrets around the choices that we make. So that's, I'd put that option out there as one alternative. Hold on. Go ahead. Well, it's sort of, it occurs to me that's probably all of the above, that we've got to take all the tracks. I mean, we've all stated our desires within this agreement, and obviously, given, you know, Cordish the opportunity to respond, not tonight certainly, but they need an opportunity to go back and, you know, I think we've all articulated the need to address certain core principles that were, that we have around this. But I think you're right, it would be prudent for us to also concurrently look at these other mechanisms. So I think it's, are you just asking, that's the tactic you want to take? I mean, I'd be supportive, because it has to be all of the above, and certainly, we're going to have to get back and staff continue to work with Cordish to try to reach some resolution. Because if we can, that would be the first thing, all the work that's been done, that would be the first thing, that would probably be the low-hanging fruit if we can get there. And hopefully, we can.
I would be. I would be supportive of, you know, if you want to put together something like that this evening, and, I mean, I certainly think Cordish is probably going to have to talk to their partners and owners and all the other kinds of things. But, I mean, I do think that we can put something together like a development agreement, and maybe there could be some language also that talks about making sure it's Cordish that does the development and not selling off chunks of it to somebody else. Then, you know, it's something that I'd be supportive of, and then, like you say, get a meeting of the Port Commission and a meeting of the city council by, we'll say, next Tuesday. At least we're making an effort to try to move this thing along as quickly as we possibly can. And, you know, if there's a meeting that needs to be done Friday, I'm more than willing to, this is such an important piece, that I'm more than willing to make every effort to do whatever I can.
Yeah, I would just, I would concur that we probably need to have the options moving forward, and we don't want to be in a position where we're restricted to Plan A with no Plan B or Plan C, so I think that would at least give us an option to move forward in the most prudent way for the public.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think the council's direction is clear, but I wanted just to make sure that we had it correctly, is that we would be exercising the option on the condition that there was an approved development agreement between the developer and the city, and that would be under the same terms and conditions that we would do, that we do all development agreements. Is that an accurate depiction? I think a lot of the other issue, other issues that we have would be covered in the development agreement that we have, we would have.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, that was my understanding.
I think that it probably needs to go in maybe a little stranger phase than what we're normally used to, and that is, we can't do a development agreement in three days. I mean, it's going to take some time. Even our city attorney is saying, no, I need some time. But...
He's usually so speedy.
I know, he's very fast. But, so I think that this option component of it, it's something that can work very expeditiously, but at the same time, I think then that that also needs to include that that language that you talked about as far as development agreement, just so we can make sure we can make these different milestones.
Right, we can't actually do a development agreement at the moment. One, we don't, I mean, that's, there's a lot to that and a lot of negotiations, but two, that requires a full-scale environmental review, and so that those, we can't do a development agreement or put a development agreement concurrent with the option agreement, but requiring that there be one is a different matter.
Mr. Viegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I would want to emphasize once again that part of this has to happen, and again, this isn't by our choice, but part of this has to happen pretty quickly, right? I mean, I think we need to get some indication, I don't want to say yesterday, but almost yesterday, as to whether or not this is even an item for further discussion, right? I mean, I think a lot of the components or the principles of the development agreement have been worked on, not specifically or certainly not completely fleshed out, but there have been discussions for three years, right? We've been having conversations about concepts and ideas and themes and different things. It would seem to me that if we're not tracking along those lines, there might not be a conversation to have beyond tomorrow. But if there is an interest expressed by everybody, that that is still an interest, then I think it warrants further conversation. But otherwise, we need to move on to Plan C or D, and whatever that is probably needs to come before us for further conversations Tuesday or whatever day we decide, because again, this issue with this legislature is not going away, and they're going to continue to hammer until they get the final vote, and they'll vote at 3:00 in the morning if need be. So I think we need to think of it in those terms.
Right, I think that's right. I mean, just having an agreement signed without an expectation that we're actually going to do a development agreement is not in anybody's, not in Cordish's interest to swirl around and waste time, and certainly not in ours, because during that time, you know, then the property would revert to this successor agency, which is, you know, not our optimal act. It's not the end of the world, but it's definitely not our optimal outcome.
Does the council want to provide any direction about a timeline to get a development agreement adopted that would be a condition of the option?
Are you recommending, so I thought, what you had said, that in order to exercise the option, there would have to be a development agreement in that option?
Right, that's what we're talking about. Right now, if you just stuck a requirement that it be a condition of exercise, then the term, the initial term of the option is still seven years, so theoretically, it could take up to seven years to get a development agreement. If that's okay, then we would go in that direction. But if you were looking to have sort of a go-no-go point, the option, you know, the development agreement needed to be approved within two years, or, I don't know, something, that's the question.
I would love to do that. My only concern with that is, I mean, you know, rushing a development agreement through when we don't have, I mean, although we've had very encouraging news from FEMA about mapping in the last week, to not, we don't have certainty about that, and the market conditions, you know, obviously, I mean, I would want to be careful to not back a developer into a corner to say, right now in the worst market ever, tell us exactly what you're going to build. So I don't know that a rushed development agreement, I mean, although I'd like to have it, I'm not sure that that's in any, it's in their interest or ours to say, you've got eight minutes to produce a development agreement.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I think probably the other factor in this particular area is the streetcar, whether or not we go north and south, and over the next, how long that's going to take, and how it directly impacts the development agreement on the type of development, if there's an accessible streetcar line going down there. So, and that's not going to happen in the next couple of years.
All right, so then, correct, so then correct me if I'm wrong, and city manager and city chairman, the motion would be to adopt the resolution approving the agreement, authorize the chair and executive director to execute, but with that central modification and other conforming changes?
Right.
The most critical one being provided that the option includes a provision requiring there to be an executed development agreement between the developer and the city prior to the exercise, first exercise of the option.
Okay, and then the...
I think we'd like you to continue the meeting until, if Tuesday's your designated date.
Okay. All right, so that would be a two-part motion to that effect?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would move the execution of option agreement with the different caveats that we've talked about, and at the same time, continue this meeting until Tuesday, we'll do a lunch meeting, evening? Okay, so 7:00 or 6:00 Tuesday? Yeah, I could do, I could do 3:00 or 4:00.
Bill, you should not be talking, you've got all that.
Retired people should not be running our meeting schedule.
Pick a time, gentlemen.
Can we say, we're going to need a closed session, so can we do 6:00?
Okay.
All right, so that's the motion. Is there a second? Okay, so it's been seconded by Mr. Johansson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. As we move forward, I, you know, this is a difficult conversation, and it's complex, and, you know, since we're in the heat of a negotiated item, which may or may not work for a lot of different reasons, being forced in that position, I don't want there to be any confusion. We are, because I know I speak for the council, we remain excited about the project, and Cordish is, has been a great partner, and we hope to be able to make this work. And Cordish didn't have to come forward at this stage and say, we're willing, we understand you have this challenge on redevelopment, can we make something work? And so, they've made a good faith effort, and I know our staff's worked hard on this as well, so I don't want to in any way diminish that. This was not an attempt by Cordish to do anything, even if it might not have been the deal points exactly that we, that, you know, the council was ready to embrace all at once. Cordish has done, you know, stepped up to try to find a solution with our staff, and we hope that that will continue. But regardless, I want to express our gratitude to Cordish for both their long-term partnership and for their work to try to come up with something that would deal with the craziness and the capital. All right, council calendar, Ms. Richardson?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to remind the council that next Wednesday, we have the Public Safety Awards across the street at the community center, and now we have a special meeting on the 23rd, and then the 29th.
Okay, any questions on the calendar? City manager report, Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to alert you and the public that with all the reins, we have been actively involved in trying to keep a watch on our levees, where our management, our EOC management team has been meeting daily to review the situation, and Ken Rusich of RD900 has been coordinating 24-hour levy patrols, and they haven't detected any issues or problems with the levees or his other storm that's going to be coming in tonight, and we think we're well poised to monitor the conditions, and we've been keeping the public informed on our website and on our city eye lights, and so I think we have the situation under control, but we'll keep you posted if anything changes.
Any questions for the acting city manager? Our city attorney reports?
Having to report.
Stop direction from members of the council. We have no future agenda requests, so motion to adjourn. So we move by Mayor Pratam Kristof, second by Mr. Viegas. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.